I wanted to call the April 25, 2018, meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Donenfeld.
Present.
Hirschbahn is excused, Hudson is excused, Maruzzi. Woods is excused, Vice Chair Calardine.
Present.
And Chair Womack.
Present.
We have a quorum.
May we have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, April 19. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Did you want to change item four?
We have people here for two of the items, so I think we'll take regular order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 This is a period for public comments. The time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on the consent calendar and other items and items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Please note that the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items not on the posted agenda. Speakers will have three minutes. Members of the public who are here on item 4A are directed to comment under this portion of the agenda. Item 4A is Oscar's Cafe and Bar. So if a member of the public wishes to speak on that, you should speak now. There being no members of the public who wish to speak, the public comment period is closed. The first item in front of us is the consent calendar, and this is the approval of the minutes of March 14, 2018, and March 28, 2018. Is there a motion? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 The consent calendar is approved. We're into public hearings. 2A, the first public hearing, is the City of Palm Springs for a request to consider a minor text amendment to Section 94.04.00 of the Palm Springs zoning code relating to architectural and planning commission review for architectural structures in the industrial or conservation zoning districts. Staff report, please.
Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission, this first text amendment that you have before you on the agenda is something that came out of the City Council Business Retention Subcommittee. And more specifically, they held a meeting with the public on March 28 to discuss several issues, two of those issues on your agenda this afternoon. The first one is relative to the approval for agricultural structures in our industrial and energy zoning districts. As a byproduct of that meeting, what was requested was that we simplify the process, essentially for greenhouse structures, with the approval of our cannabis regulations in December of 2017. There is interest on the part of City Council in perhaps streamlining some aspects of that process. And so what they have requested that we develop for them was an amendment to our architectural approval regulations to exempt greenhouses or agricultural buildings from the architectural review process. What is being proposed is that in Chapter 94 of the architectural review language in our code, is that with other staff-level approvals, agricultural buildings would also be a staff-level approval. One of the things I want to make clear is that these buildings are still subject to our development standards, so they need to meet lot coverage, setback requirements, height limitations, et cetera. It's just that staff would be doing that review at the building permit stage, as opposed to taking those through the Architectural Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission. Another thing that I want to clarify is that this would only apply to agricultural structures in the EI and the M2 zoning districts. And I've provided a map showing the location of where those zoning districts are, and as you'll see, it's the area that's primarily north of the I-10 freeway. One of the questions that I've had, you have a public comment letter that I distributed to you, is questioning whether or not agricultural buildings in the M1P and the M1 zoning districts should also be exempt from architectural review. The reason I did not develop the ordinance that way is because those two zoning districts, M1P and M1, are located in the areas right within the city itself, more central to the city itself. For example, along Gene Autry, along Ramon, and then along North Indian Canyon, in the Desert Highlands gateway area. And so I felt that architectural review was still important in those areas, and as has been proposed, it would only be the M2 and the EI, which are, again, essentially north of the freeway. There are no other changes being proposed to our architectural review requirements at this time, and so that is the extent of the ordinance. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those questions.
At this point, questions of staff before we go to public hearing. Commissioner Donenfeld.
I'm curious, could you shed some light on what the council's thinking was on exempting these kinds of structures from our review? Because it would seem to me that although they're certainly lawful and certainly encouraged and necessary, they often can be somewhat controversial, and there's no opportunity for the public to have an airing of their views if we take it out of the Planning Commission approval process. And I'm surprised, I'm sort of surprised that council would want to do it that way, as opposed to allowing the public to exercise their public comment with respect to these issues.
Yeah, that's a good question. One of the things that will still remain in place is, in our cannabis ordinance that we adopted back in December, it still requires a conditional use permit for cultivation, for manufacturing, and for testing. And so there will still be a public review process for the conditional use permit. It's just the architectural review process will no longer be there just for the agricultural buildings.
So, but if an agricultural building, it still is exempt, if it's just an agricultural building, no distribution, no manufacturing, we don't see it.
Correct.
If this passes.
Correct. But again, the conditional use permits would still come before the Planning Commission.
Are we also comfortable with the definition of agricultural to include the growing of cannabis? I don't know why I'm sort of old-fashioned, but I'm thinking of corn and soybeans when I think of agricultural and I don't think of cannabis. But is that state-of-the-art language for a cannabis-growing facility today?
No, it is not state-of-the-art, and if you would like to include that as a recommendation to the City Council, that we define what agricultural uses are, I think that would be more than appropriate. Keep in mind that this wouldn't apply not only to cannabis, but to any other agricultural uses, that we can't be so narrowly focused that we exclude other agricultural uses and only allow cannabis.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Maruzzi?
I think Commissioner Donenfeld is old-fashioned.
I would not dispute that.
Very fashionable.
These questions are inappropriate. The public, there being no other questions of staff, the public hearing is open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? No one, there being no one who wishes to speak, and the city being the applicant, we have no need for rebuttal period, so the issue is in front of the commission. I'm going to start with Commissioner Donenfeld and then go through for comments.
I, this is really a council decision. If they don't want this to be part of a more open public process, then I think that's their prerogative to do so. I would like, though, to enhance the definition of agricultural to include but not limited to growing of cannabis, something to that effect.
Commissioner Maruzzi? Do we have a motion?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
With the suggestion?
With the suggestion by Doug, I'm sorry, yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, the screens aren't on, so we have a motion and a second. Can you call the roll?
Yes.
They'd probably still vote.
Mine's over here.
Where's the?
Mine's going up.
Oh.
We have, we have four members voting. We have four yeses. The motion passes unanimously. Point of order today, Flynn, a majority, a quorum is three?
A quorum is four, so we need four votes in the affirmative to pass any item on the agenda today.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the City of Palm Springs for a request to consider a zone text amendment to amend the Palm Springs zoning code, Sections 91.00.10, 92.09.01, and 92.09.02, to allow grocery stores within the Central Business District Zone and to provide for other minor modifications and corrections. Staff report, please.
Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission, this is the second item that came out of the City Council Business Retention Subcommittee public meeting that they held back in March. Their discussion at that meeting was relative to providing access to food and to avoid food deserts. And one of the things that was noted, that in our zoning code, grocery stores are specifically prohibited in the downtown area. What is unusual is that within the land use for the downtown area, we do allow residential uses. We even have language in our zoning code that says we should provide the needs of daily life for downtown users. And so our general plan certainly supports the correction to our zoning code to allow grocery stores as a permitted use. What I am proposing for you today is that any grocery store that is less than, let's see, 15,000 square feet in area, would be permitted by right, and then larger grocery stores, anything over 15,000 square feet, would require a conditional use permit. The reason for that distinction is that our downtown area is primarily a pedestrian area, and so we want to keep uses in line with the pedestrian nature of downtown. When you start having larger stores over 15,000 square feet, there are additional impacts that you need to take into consideration, such as the maneuvering of large trucks, how do you store the merchandise, et cetera. And so it's important that we have some type of a discretionary review process to look at the specifics of any stores that are larger than 15,000 square feet. So that is the primary reason for the amendment that you have before you. While we were doing this, there's a couple of things that staff wanted to clean up and correct, some issues that we've been having as we've had conversations with members of the public about some uses. First of all is that in our retail use categories, we are rather specific. As you look at the permitted uses, there's over 60 uses permitted in the CBD district. If you combine all the retail uses together, we can narrow that list down to 20 uses by having more generalized categories. As you'll note from some of the retail uses that we have in there currently, some of them are a little bit out of date, such as dressmaker shops and things like that. And so the idea is that by having a more generalized discussion or definition of a retail use, that as new retail uses come along, that we don't have to amend our code every time to accommodate them, that there doesn't need to be an interpretation by the planning director for new retail uses. In a similar fashion, I'm also proposing that we condense personal service uses. Personal service uses are defined as those things, such as a hair salon, barber shop, tanning salon, nail salon, dry cleaner, shoe repair, those types of uses. And so what I'm proposing is that, again, rather than being specific as to each and every personal service use, that we use a generalized category. There are also other areas that there has been some confusion in the code. For example, on spa uses and massage, in one instance, it requires a land use permit; in another instance, it requires a conditional use permit, if it's associated with a hotel use. So to standardize that, what I'm proposing is that we just require a land use permit for the spa use. Similarly, for bicycle rental, in certain cases, it requires a, it's a permitted use; in other cases, it's a land use permit. So we're also proposing to standardize that as well. And then finally, our office regulations are another one that gives our public some issues in terms of the way that's worded currently. And so I've tried to clean that up to make it very simple in terms of office uses and the amount of ground floor square footage that's permissible and where a conditional use permit is required. I think you'll recall, let's see, was it last year that we did have an office use that wanted more than the limited amount of square footage on the ground floor that came through as a conditional use permit? And so I'm not proposing to change that process, I just wanted to clarify when that was necessary. That concludes my comments. We did receive public comment. I had a handout, I got an email just earlier today, relative to certain uses in the downtown area. And Madam Chair, if you'd like, I'll just go through those comments.
Yes, please.
There was a question about a number of different uses. Number one, the question was, would convenience, food, and sundry stores still be allowed? The answer is yes. We would classify that as a general retail use, as the impact is no different. The second question is, would we allow drive-in and drive-through facilities? The answer to that is yes. We would allow that by a conditional use permit. Since this is a pedestrian-oriented district, we want to retain the conditional use permit process to review those on a case-by-case basis. Another question was relative to massage establishments. As you'll note, we're not making any significant changes to the current regulations. We're just standardizing it so it requires a land use permit as an accessory use. Another question is relative to, would secondhand stores be permitted? And looking at all of these shops that sell mid-century moderns, sorry, mid-century modern goods and articles. In response to that, we have in our list of permitted uses antique stores. Things that are mid-century fall under the definition of an antique, because now they're fifty years old or older. And so I'm comfortable that we would still allow those uses as a permitted use under the definition of an antique store rather than a secondhand store. And then finally, the question was, would we allow upholstery shops? There is cited that there is an upholstery shop there on Indian. We would allow that as an accessory use to an interior design store or a furniture store, but not as a principal use. As a principal use, we would recommend that that be in industrial districts. So those were the questions that were posed through the email that I received earlier. That concludes my presentation to you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Commissioner Kellergine, and then I'll go down.
Flynn, the fifteen thousand feet is the, now, where'd you, how did you come up with that number?
I'm looking at kind of industry standards. As you look at the standard drugstore format, for example, Rite Aid, CVS, typically their stores are about ten to twelve thousand square feet. And so I kind of went on the upper end of that, going at fifteen thousand square feet. Your smaller grocery stores, Trader Joe's?
Trader Joe's, that is my specific idea, they're usually smaller than fifteen thousand square feet?
Yes.
So basically, it's a specialty grocery store would be allowed by right?
Correct.
And I really can't conceive that a large grocery store would go downtown, but it would still require a conditional use permit?
Yeah, it would require a conditional use permit. Also, with the larger stores, you tend to have more parking and need that associated with those stores, and that's difficult to find in our downtown area.
Thank you.
Mr. Donenfeld?
One quick question. I assume council's reason for doing this is because we're going to increasingly be building residential apartments in downtown Palm Springs. I know the specific plan calls for that in terms of the downtown development, so there have to be obviously places for people to buy.
Exactly, and that's the intent. And again, the general plan language states that as a goal, that we need to amend our zoning code to do that.
And your other changes, your cleanup changes are basically coming from the Planning Department, not from the council?
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. How does this relate to the specific plan? Because I know the specific plan allowed some of these uses, and do they conflict? And does this now match what's in the specific plan, or are they different?
The specific plan is a standalone plan for those blocks that are within the specific plan. However, in the language of the specific plan, it does allow for a grocery store within those blocks. And so this does match what we would permit within the specific plan area.
And I guess the other thing is just not seeing a red line. It's, I function with red lines, so I'm, I don't quite know exactly where the changes have been from the original, and what you deleted and what you added. I'm wondering if anybody else has that discomfort and would like to see it come back as a red line?
I'd like to, I'd like to see the red line, but I don't need to see this one come back.
Madam Chair, I would not disagree. Normally, I would provide you a red line, but unfortunately, I was a little pressed for time in getting this finished.
Is it possible, when this comes back to us with minutes, that we get a red line if we go ahead and approve it so that we have some record as to what had changed?
Yes, absolutely. I'd be happy to do that.
I think what you've described is the changes, but as I looked through it, I couldn't figure out which categories you had eliminated when you did retail stores. And it just, so if we, if we can see that later, the intent of this, I think, is in line with what we would like to see. So I'm going to make a motion.
Madam Chair, you need to have public comment.
Oh, so, sorry. Okay. So, is there, I forgot it was a public hearing. Would any members of the public like to come forward for public comment on this item? Please. Ah, two gentlemen are here.
You need to get, is there, is Mike?
Hold on, let me see if I can get. Sorry.
Okay.
Yes?
I'm William Hamilton. This is Brian Strand, co-owners of the Grandpa Pet Resort. We have a facility at 368 South Palm Canyon in Palm Springs that we've had now for four years. And our main campus is on the eastern side of the valley, over near Indio, on two and a half acres. We have four buildings and about thirty employees and contractors. And we've had that business for fifteen years, and we've been considered the top pet resort in the, in the valley. Every year, they've had the category. The purpose for being here today is that when we established our business over on Palm Canyon Drive, we knew that it was zoned in a zone that was restrictive to us expanding our business. So as a consequence, we have only had day camp at that facility, because the category only allows us to have day camp activities. We cannot sustain ourselves as a day camp-only facility in Palm Springs. We have also pretty much confirmed, day in and day out, that this community really needs downtown pet care service for visitors as well as residents who are commuting. But we knew, coming in with eyes wide open, that the zoning requirements restricted us from having, having boarding. We don't consider ourselves a kennel, and I think one of the challenges that we have, and we had when we opened our campus fifteen years ago on the east side, was that we're a pet resort, and we're upscale, we're very neighbor-friendly, we have, all of our buildings are very high-end, they're very aesthetically pleasing to the community. We've done serious studies on noise abatement, health issues, safety, all the concerns that might make our type of business objectionable. But again, because of all the things that we've invested in our business over the years, we don't consider ourselves a kennel, which I think is a kind of an outdated term. You were talking about that earlier, about some other businesses. I think, we think that's a little bit of an outdated term for what we do as a pet resort. So what we're here today to ask is whether we could expand our services in a limited way, but we'd like to have the ability to do some boarding at our, at the facility on South Palm Canyon Drive, which would allow us to be viable and maintain a service in Palm Springs. Otherwise, we, we're not very optimistic that we have a future on this side of the valley, just doing day camp. And we're, I'm open to answer any questions you have, and we're, and we have some brochures that Brian would like to share with you if you'd, if you'd like them.
If you give them to staff and they can?
Madam Chair?
Not yet. Thank you.
So it's an open-ended request or a question?
I think we do have a question. I will take the question before we close the public hearing.
I just wanted to know where on South Palm Canyon you're located?
We're just behind the Rite Aid, in the same building as Rite Aid Drugstore.
Okay.
It's thirty, it's about thirty-four hundred square feet. And if we were, were able to do something, we would like to maintain our business there and have some limited boarding, and we could agree with whatever makes sense for the city. And we could also show plans of how we would do that, and any concerns you might have about noise, safety, or otherwise, we've certainly, we certainly have a strong history of dealing with that.
I think the question, you've answered the question, thank you. We, he asked you a question, we got your answer.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I'm a little long-winded.
Yeah, the issue is now before, before the commission. This, this is before the commission. I think what I'd like to do is direct that issue to Flynn. I think we do have two daycare facilities. Both Grandpa and Barkingham have a daycare in the downtown, in the CBD, in this. Ah, okay. Grandpa has a facility in the south end of the CBD. And do you want, how would you like to handle this? Would you like to have us hold and give you some time to think about this?
What I would recommend is that if this is something that the Planning Commission would like to entertain, give me a chance to develop some language for you. I think there's a way that we might be able to do this if we have adequate restrictions in place so that there aren't impacts to adjacent uses. That's one of our major concerns with kennels, is you do have noise, you have issues of waste, et cetera, that do become a little bit problematic in a confined urban setting. But let me work on some language, and that also gives me the opportunity to come back to you with a red line version, so that way you can see both of those things together.
So if people would like to comment on this, I'm going to make a motion that we bring this back at our next meeting?
Yes, in two weeks, that should be adequate.
And continue it for two weeks.
I'll second that, but I would like to add, Flynn, is it possible for you to take a look at what are adequate facilities for kennel operations? Now, I know kennel's not the word you're using, but basically, we're talking generically about a kennel. It seems to me that you want to make sure you've got enough ample area for running, for exercising the dogs, and I'm wondering whether this facility will have that and what the standards in the industry are for a good kennel operation, because that would be a concern of mine as well.
Yeah, I had done some research on that in the past. When I was with the City of Las Vegas, we had similar concerns come up with urban locations. So I'll just resurrect some of that information if I can and bring that back to you.
Thank you.
Flynn, does the, does this ordinance or this list of uses, can it be segregated into any smaller areas? I could think this being inappropriate for the core downtown area, maybe the specific plan area in particular, something like that, but not as much of a problem in the kind of periphery where this is, they are located. I don't know if you want to have any geographic distinctions or not.
It's a little bit difficult in that the entire area is defined as a single zoning district, Central Business District. Now, what they have done in the office category is they've defined the Historic Village Center. And if we want to perhaps use that as excluding kennels within the Historic Village Center, that might be a way to distinguish.
Take a look at that.
So that you don't have it right downtown, but you have it on the periphery of your Central Business District.
Out where Rite Aid is, I don't see as much of a problem.
And, and on, on that same issue, have we required other, other daycare and kennel facilities to be located outside who would otherwise have been located in the CBD? And are we creating something that is detrimental to other businesses that we have?
Potentially. We've had one come through in the last several years that is located off of Ramon in our industrial area that came through for a conditional use permit for a kennel facility specifically. What we have indicated to anyone who has asked in the Planning Department, that daycare, we would treat the same as any type of a pet store use, that animals are there on-site during the day, but there is no overnight stays. And so the impacts are no different than we would have otherwise. Again, with kenneling, you have issues of overnight noise, you have additional waste and things like that that have to be dealt with. And so we do typically distinguish those, but anyone who has come in, if they've wanted to do daycare, we've allowed them to do it anywhere that we would allow a pet store use. And so I think we've been pretty even-handed in terms of that interpretation. And again, I can think of only one other kennel facility that we've approved in the last few years that is not in the downtown area and specifically directed elsewhere.
So we have a motion and a second by Commissioner Donenfeld to continue this item for, until our next meeting for three weeks, two weeks?
To our first meeting in May.
To our first meeting in May, with the request that we see a red line of the changes and the issue of a kennel possibly outside of the Historic Village Center, whether that's a use that the Planning Director can, can think about, can think of language for. So I don't think we had an affirmative on that. We wanted him to come back to us with his, his best thinking. No, sorry. That has been passed unanimously. Thank you for your comments. Okay, shall we go straight ahead? I just was asking if we should go straight ahead. Nobody needed a break in a half an hour. Take a one-minute break while Flynn is discussing. Item 4A, which is new business, and this is not a public hearing item. Daniel L. Gore of Oscar's Cafe and Bar for an amendment to a land use permit to expand indoor and outdoor entertainment options for the existing restaurant bar located at 125 East Takwitz Canyon Way, Suite 108. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, it's not a public hearing item. You can stay there.
How do you know I'm here?
If you sit down and if we have questions, we'll call you.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, as you may know, Oscar's Cafe and Bar is operating at 125 East Takwitz Canyon Way, at the southeast corner of Takwitz and Indian. The business has been in operation since 2013, and last year, in the summer, Mr. Daniel Gore took ownership of the business and a land use permit was transferred to his name. The business itself is a full-service restaurant, offers a full-service menu and beverage selections that, as well as entertainment, as a part of its normal operation. They have indoor bands, DJs, open microphone sessions, and productions and shows. When the application originally came in last summer, staff limited the outdoor entertainment to acoustical instruments without amplification, except on Sundays, when a disc jockey with two speakers is permitted. So staff has listed the hours of operation on page two of your report. The applicant noted at that time that he would be submitting an amendment in the future, so that is what is before you today. The applicant has submitted a request to expand the outdoor entertainment, allowing live bands, DJs, productions, or shows between the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Saturdays. Continue the operation on Sundays from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. and allow up to three other nights during the week to have outdoor entertainment between the hours of 4:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. The applicant doesn't believe that all of these, the operation would not occur five nights initially, but only as business picks up when, during season. Staff has had some issues in the past with outdoor amplification, so that is the reason why we have generally not allowed or approved outdoor amplification. However, there, this is one exception, as it is located within the Central Business District and is somewhat significantly further away from residential, as is the case in other, other situations. When discussing the matter with the Police Department, they have indicated that the business owner has been cooperative, and they have not had any loud noise complaints for over a year. The zoning code does provide. The zoning code does permit the Planning Director to refer this matter to the Planning Commission, so that is why this item is before you. In our analysis, we reviewed the impact of the line juice as well as the compatibility to adjacent properties in our report, and we would note that, you know, in the history that the owner has had the business, he has not had noise complaints for the current operation. And if this application is approved, we would recommend a review in six months. So that is a condition that we have listed in the draft resolution. When reviewing the compatibility with adjacent businesses, we looked at, as I said, the location of the business being centrally located within the CBD, and the commercial businesses around the tenant space have provided letters of support of the proposed operation. We also note that the closest residential property is over 900 feet away to the southwest. So when looking at all of these factors and considering the request, staff would be recommending approval of the application, as I said, subject to a review in six months. So what you have attached to your report is a draft resolution supporting the application as well as the draft line juice permit that outlines all of the conditions that would be a part of the permit. The two conditions that I have bolded are conditions number 10 and 21. These are the two conditions that have been added to the permit since it was originally approved, since the original approved permit back in August. Basically, that the entertainment is limited during the hours as requested, and that a six-month review would be required from the date of issuance. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The applicant is also here if you have questions of the applicant. Thank you.
Questions of staff first. Commissioner Donenfeld?
David, you mentioned in the staff report that the proposal is for amplified music at increased times. You talked about it being two speakers. When the applicant came before you, did he explain to you that he was going to be using for the new amplified times the same two speakers that are currently in existence on the site now and not be changing those out? Or was that a discussion that you had with him?
We did not have that discussion.
When we ask the applicant questions, I would like to talk to him about the nature of his speakers.
Are there other questions of staff? I have some.
At the moment.
I have a couple. Where is the closest residential that's 900 feet? And did you count in that, the residential that's permitted in the specific plan? Right now, I believe residential units have been built and may not be occupied in Block C, but there are residential units in Block C of the specific plan, and Block F is targeted for residential. I think only residential would be allowed there. So is that included in the residential that you've identified?
That was not. That was actually to the southwest, so by the tennis club neighborhood. That was the distance that we had measured.
And where in the tennis club neighborhood?
So the close, it was the apartment building off of Bolardo, and I believe it was, I'm trying to recall the specific location here.
But you didn't include.
But it was off of Bolardo, yeah, so it was off of Bolardo to the west of CBD.
But you didn't include the ones that are potential.
No, those would probably be about 700 feet.
Block F or Block C?
Block C.
And then, question for both you and Flynn. We had had some, and I think we have in front of us, the Infusion Beach, some conditions that came out of Infusion Beach, which is the only other location that I believe we have permitted amplified music. And I know that's a different location, but that included a sound limiter system, a low-frequency standard, and some discussion of orientation of speakers. And being concerned about consistency, I was wondering why you didn't include those conditions or any of those conditions in this application?
Well, I think the reason for that was that was much more closer to residential than what we have in this case. That was essentially adjacent to residential to the west. And then, in this case, there's no residential directly adjacent to this project.
I would think the Rivet, Rivet 64 is about as close as the.
For Infusion Beach?
I think that's pretty close, but that's probably 700 feet.
Actually, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'll jump in here in terms of Infusion Beach. 64th Riv, as measured from property line to property line, is less than 250 feet away from the Infusion Beach parcel. And so, again, with Infusion Beach, residential is much closer to that property than what we see here with the Oscars proposal. And so, as Mr. Newell has already explained, the context here is much different in terms of the proximity to residential uses. Also, you have many intervening buildings that help to limit or block the sound to a certain degree that we don't find in the Infusion Beach area, per se. And also, in addition, there is a history of having outdoor entertainment with this specific property where complaints have been minimal or nonexistent in terms of formal complaints being filed relative to the noise. So there is a history that they have been able to operate with outdoor entertainment successfully. So those three factors, I think, contribute to our recommendation. However, this is a discretionary review by the Planning Commission, and if you feel that additional conditions of approval are necessary, you are able to do that under this permit.
Madam Chair, I'd like to discuss this.
Before we discuss it, we're still at questions of staff, so we're not at discussion. And I think the next step would be to have questions of the applicant.
I do have a question of staff.
Please.
Has Village Pub has live music, does it not?
I believe it does.
This is on South Palm Canyon, closer to the residential?
Yes.
Is it amplified?
I think it's inside.
I think, isn't it outside? People are dancing outside. What I'm driving at is, that seems to be, if I'm correct, much closer to residential than this property. And have there been a lot of complaints about Village Pub?
You have to, would you direct those as questions?
Like Jeopardy?
Well, is Village, I think the question was, is Village Pub amplified indoors or outdoors?
They have a stage on the interior. I don't, I'm not aware of any outdoor amplification unless they open those doors that are directly adjacent to that stage. But they do have a stage on the interior.
So we don't really know if it's exterior sound?
I don't know how much sound would travel outside of that. Las Casuelas has outdoor entertainment. They have, do have some sort of, you know, some barriers on the edge of their space that do mitigate some of their sound.
Do we know if it's amplified?
Mm-hmm, it is.
Las Casuelas?
Mm-hmm.
It's probably, you probably wouldn't know if there have been complaints. I mean, you didn't look into that.
There's a history there in terms of why, I think, how they built that to make it so that it would be mostly contained within that space.
Okay, thank you.
Following up with that, Flynn, do you know how many outdoor amplified permits the city has given that aren't special permits?
I don't know off the top of my head, Madam Chair.
So you don't know if there are any that you could cite?
In terms of outdoor amplification?
Yes.
It would be a small number, but again, I don't know the exact, specific number.
Okay, there are some questions of the applicant, if there are not more questions of staff. Is the applicant here? I think that some of the questions have been.
Yeah, I, you probably are aware of this, but we are, while we are a resort community, and we understand we have to make it fun for people to be here, and outdoor music and outdoor enjoyment is part of the Palm Springs experience, we are concerned, however, about neighbors and noise issues. And my question to you is, I know you've got two speakers there now, and I've attended some of the events on Sundays. Are you planning to enhance those speakers at all? And if you could, if you're not, could you explain to me how they're composed? In other words, subwoofers seem to be a real problem in terms of a beat that permeates through the environment. Do they contain subwoofers? And can you describe them generally? And are you going to keep them or enhance them if you have more amplified music outside?
Nothing will be enhanced. It would be going forward with what, basically, the Sunday entertainment, that's the, it would be the most of what we would be amplifying is what, so Sunday would be the limit. So I wouldn't be enhancing. We use two speakers.
The two speakers that you use on Sunday.
Correct, and then there is a bass speaker, a subwoofer speaker.
You would not.
I would not enhance beyond that.
They would be adequate for your purposes.
Correct.
Thank you.
I think my questions go more, again, toward consistency. We've required in the past that there be a sound limiter system so that sound would be limited to the levels that would be at the property, at the edges of the property, so that sound would not spill out, and that there be some limitation on bass, and that that would be pre-programmed in terms of the extent of the sound that came out. Is that something that you would be comfortable doing?
When you're referencing a sound limiter, are you talking about a monitor?
A monitoring system.
Like a smartphone app monitor system or something that's actually electronically infused into the system? Because the people that.
Flynn, possibly staff could explain what we'd require in the other instance.
Yeah. In a recent approval that we had for outdoor entertainment, their system, their sound system actually had a limiter within, as a component of the sound system itself. So it is modulated so that at the perimeter of the property, it doesn't exceed the city's noise ordinance, that there's always a monitor in place or a reducer in place so that the sound could never exceed those limits. And so, again, it's a component of the system itself rather than a separate monitoring device.
Yes, I have one of my vendors here that plays for us in the past, and he's saying it's already in his system. So as long as it's not something that's substantially expensive for me to purchase, I don't believe that would be a problem to do. I have not personally known about a limiter. I do have smartphone apps that I use to monitor our sound for indoors, so I definitely could use that to monitor the sound outdoors to keep it within city limits if that was an issue.
Are there other questions of the applicant? Are you, what direction are your speakers aimed? And are they aimed downward? Are they?
I've heard the city's suggestion they are aimed towards the building facing the mountains. Where, if you're familiar with Oscars, there's a two-story, they're facing us, they're on the opposite side of the two-story building, so the sound is actually facing the two-story building.
So aimed downward facing the two-story building?
Correct.
And this is a question, maybe this is a question for staff, thank you. And your program is incredibly popular in Palm Springs, so, thank you.
It's an institution.
It's an, yes. Staff, questions for staff, if we wanted to have the review in six months be before the Planning Commission, instead of it be a staff review, do you have a problem with I might not get support on this. Do we want to have general discussion?
That would be fine with staff.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I'm not inclined at this time to put additional noise restrictions on this project. It has a long history. I would add to the criteria that staff talked about, about the consistency with the, something that divides this from the Infusion Beach is that this is part of downtown, and you expect, and if I was moving into an apartment downtown in Building B or Building C, I would expect that sort of noise to be part of my environment, and in fact, I would probably choose to live there because I like to have that convenience and that sort of thing. This is not something like we have in Las Palmas, adjacent across the street from Infusion Beach, which is a primarily, you know, a typical, more suburban-style neighborhood. This is an urban neighborhood, and herbs get noisy sometimes, and this is what adds a lot of the flavor to it. I think in this case, we also have a long history here of, probably the worst-case noise would be on the Sunday night because it is an institution in a major community in our town. And, you know, we have no problems, at least with respect to noise, that I'm aware of. I know some people don't like interior noise, but that's a different question. So I would not be, I don't think we need it at this time. If our review after six months shows that we have a problem, then I could, we could take a look at it then.
Comments, Commissioner Donenfeld?
I would agree with Commissioner Calardine. This is a very different location. It is downtown Palm Springs. People expect noise. If you're going to buy an apartment or rent an apartment in the downtown development, you're going to expect it, you're going to want that kind of activity. And I really don't think, because of the way the walls are placed vis-à-vis the sound equipment, that the historic tennis club is going to be impacted by this at all. If, however, in six months, we see we have a problem, then we can go to more draconian measures with respect to sound limitation.
Yeah, I completely agree with Commissioners Calardine and Donenfeld. The way I look at this part of downtown, it is the center of our tourist district, and we want to support activities that people find fun. And we have to do that. And we know in this case, they've been there a while, and there have been apparently virtually no complaints, including the businesses across the street, Tysmile and other businesses that are directly impacted. So my feeling is, yes, it's potentially five nights a week, 10:00 p.m. We're going to review this in six months. I think we should give it a try. I don't have a problem with it at all.
I've made a motion, and I'll state it unless somebody else has.
Madam Chair, before you state your motion, there is one request that our attorney has identified. On condition number 10, we indicate that they would be allowed to have outdoor entertainment on Saturdays and Sundays, and then it says, and three other nights during the week. There's some additional language that he'd like to add. Mr. Priest, if you might, go ahead and identify that.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the commission, just a brief addition. It would be after the first sentence, during the week between 4:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m., fourth line down, we would recommend the three additional nights shall be determined by mutual agreement of the permittee and the Planning Department. And that way, the city has a say in which of those three nights. And that would be all we would suggest, Madam Chair.
Why don't I state my motion, and then we'll see if we get a second. I would include your language. I would include the language that the speakers for the sound system be oriented downward and facing the two-story building, as is currently done, that there be no enhancement of the current speaker system, no increase in, increase in speakers such as, so as to increase the volume, and that this come back to the Planning Commission in six months as opposed to coming back to staff.
I can agree with that.
Second?
I'll second it.
I'd like to hear from the applicant. Do you have an issue with that?
You need to ask me if I'd like to ask the applicant.
Oh, I do?
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes, yes. It is within my purview to ask the applicant, and if you would like to comment on that.
I don't have a problem. Mr. Gore?
Thank you. I don't have a problem with that. We'll see you in six months.
And just to explain, I do think that we want some controls. We don't want this intensified, and if it comes back in six months and we find that we do need a limiter system, it's something that I would like to see the commission look at. The main concern for. The main concern for me isn't the Sunday Tea Dance, which is an institution, but increasing it to five days a week and seeing if we have complaints and issues. So, it, the motion has been made and seconded. Any other comments? Did you call the roll? Oh, seconded by three people, okay. This passes unanimously. Congratulations, and we look forward to your new expanded business being very successful. With that, we are moving right along to Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments. I do have one. Flynn, do you know when you're planning on having the meeting with HSPB for the subcommittee that's working on the demolition issues?
You're, you're stealing my thunder, Madam Chair. I had just spoken with the chair prior to the meeting today, indicating that it looks like we are ready to move forward with the language about demolition of structures. This is a topic that both Planning Commission and our Historic Site Preservation Board are interested in. Mr. Priest will be assisting us with that ordinance. I anticipate probably in about two to three weeks, we'd be ready to have the two subcommittees get together to discuss. And so, we'll be contacting the members of the subcommittee to schedule that here in the near future.
Thank you. Any other Planning Commission reports, comments?
Do you want to report it all on the golf course?
I think, yes. We've got three of us here who've been meeting on the golf course conversion ordinance. We've had one study session and two subsequent meetings, an initial meeting, I think, three meetings. We have been, had the pleasure of being joined by a number of the members of the public who live adjacent to Mesquite and/or Bel Air Greens, both neighborhoods of which seem very concerned about what potentially could happen, as well as two of our preservation organizations, Friends of Palm Springs Mountains and Oswalt, the Oswalt, Friends of Oswalt Canyon. We've draft, we've, we have a draft ordinance. We had gotten comments on it from the commission during the study session. We've been incorporating them and have a few issues left that we've been trying to resolve on both percentages of, percentages and descriptions of required open space and understandings of requirements regarding floodplain areas. We're pretty close. We're going to be meeting, hopefully, again, next week or in two weeks, and with Mr. Priest assisting us on some of the legal questions that have come forward with the hope that we would be able to get this as part of the package that was requested by council on PDDs, small lots, subdivisions, open space, and other issues back to the council in, I'm not sure if it's a short order, but relatively quickly for how these things progress. Any other comments on that? We've, please?
I just feel that we've really come a long way in a fairly short time. And we've gotten good input from the public, and we've been able to really focus on issues that are specific to our city, even though it was based on a city in Florida, but we've made it much more specific to what we have here. And I'm looking forward to buttoning it up, and hopefully, the council will, will review it and approve, because I think there's probably developers out there and property owners that would like to know what the standards are, so.
We also have been meeting with the PD Subcommittee. I think we had comments at the last commission meeting. We haven't yet gotten back together to finalize those, but are hoping to get that also back fairly shortly. We are really pleased to have City Council member Lisa Middleton with us as our liaison, and wondering if she has any reports to us on anything that, that either the council is doing or would like us to do.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of updated items. We are in the budgetary process, and I would like to make, to highlight that the current budget does include $400,000 for a zoning plan update. I think this will very, is very much needed and will be helpful as a part of the PDD process. Also, $150,000 set aside currently for an additional associate planner, and $70,000 for a contract employee to help with the zoning updates. And these are recommendations that came from the planning director to the city manager. He included them in the budget package that was presented to the ad hoc committee yesterday, and we are very supportive of that. But obviously, that's a subcommittee. It still has to go to the full city council. And all of us, and I'm going to be banging on this drum quite a bit over the next few weeks, should Measure C pass, there will be a eight and a half, 10 and a half million-dollar hole in our budget, and all of our new projected expenditures will be, will be very difficult to, to sustain. So, let me move on to another item. This was brought up by me at the last city council meeting, and next Wednesday, we will be considering a change that would allow Chair Wermick and Vice Chair Calerdyne to be extended for their terms for up to one more year, given the fact that we had two planning commissioners that we lost in court earlier this year, one to the untimely death of Commissioner Low and my own election to city council. We, we believe experience is critical on the planning commission. We have staggered terms because we want turnover not to come all at once, but to come over longer periods of time. In addressing this particular issue this time, we are trying not to create a precedent that would have every commissioner that's term is coming up to and start lobbying for an extension. We think there are extraordinary circumstances with the importance of the work of the planning commission and the experience of, of the two of you. And so, that will be considered this Wednesday, and I, I am hopeful that it will be approved. In the last one, this is much more a personal comment than it would be from the entire city council. But as you do go into your work on reform of the PDD process, I would very strongly encourage and ask that you consider some of the changes in the public benefit process that were discussed at Planning Commission and at City Council last year. What you decide is absolutely your decision, but I encourage you to at least address that question. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Donenfeld?
Lisa, was there any conversation about updating the general plan? You talked about the, updating the code. The general plan, I know, is a bigger ticket item than even that.
And I'll fall back on the director, but the recommendation that I understood that was coming from staff was that we stagger this over the course of a couple of years as opposed to trying to do all of it in one year. That certainly, from a budgetary standpoint, makes it easier, if in fact, it makes it easier for the director to do the work.
Got it, thanks.
And if I might just follow up on that, that is correct, that we don't anticipate doing all the work at once, and nor do we have the staffing to be able to do that. What I had requested is that we start off doing, updating the land use element and the housing element, because we have significant concerns with the issues that we have before us and with the changes that have been recommended through the ad hoc PDD Subcommittee, that that was really critical for us to do first. And then, we would follow with amendments to our zoning code and additional elements of the general plan as needed. But again, I thought that there was some important work that we could get out of the way first.
Other questions of City Councilor Middleton? Just in response, I believe we have included public benefit, a public benefits section in the draft ordinance that Planning Commission discussed in our last meeting, and we have to refine our comments and then bring that back. I think, Flynn, we are anticipating bringing that, though, as a package with the small lot subdivision and PDD, open space, and golf course conversions at one time?
I would actually like to stagger those just a little bit. We'll move forward with the golf course conversion, as you've made wonderful progress on that. We'll bring forth the PDD changes, and then we will follow shortly thereafter with the small lot ordinance. I think trying to discuss them all at once becomes a little bit problematic, but understanding that they work together is important, and so, we do want to have them closely follow one another.
Funding Director's Report?
Just a couple of quick items. Number one, on the PDD Subcommittee, we will schedule the next meeting once Mr. Herschbein is back in the, the country. And so, that will be here right after the 1st of May, sometime in, in that time period. And then, secondly, I attended the National Planning Conference in New Orleans. As part of that, I was selected to give a presentation on golf course redevelopment. On the program with me were representatives from the city of Las Vegas, who has also dealt with two golf courses that are in the process of repurposing, and then also the woman from Collier County in Florida who worked on their ordinance that they adopted. It was interesting to note that none of those golf courses have received their entitlements yet. In Collier County, the application was filed two years ago. They're still going through a revision process. In Las Vegas, they are also going through a revision process on those two golf courses. But again, that has served as an impetus for adopting regulations in terms of how you deal with open space buffers, and most importantly, with public input, that they are codifying the public input process for those. And so, again, congratulations to our Subcommittee who is doing excellent work in that regard. And that concludes my report to you, and again, thank you for being here today.
So, we've converted two golf courses ahead of our ordinance, and they've done the ordinance and no golf courses. Interesting.
Did they explain why it's taken them so long to get entitlements?
It has because of the significant amount of concern with the proposals as they originally came in.
By the public?
By the applicant.
By the applicant?
The public is concerned with what the applicant has proposed. So, in the case of one of the Las Vegas golf courses, it has been revised several times, and there is a lawsuit in process relative to one of those. With the Collier County example, again, it's a process of, they've had public input on the proposed plan, and the applicant has gone back to the drawing board in terms of trying to accommodate those requests. And so, it's just a lengthy public input process that has delayed them.
There being no additional comments, this meeting is adjourned until our next meet, our first meeting in May, which is... May 9th, until May 9th at 1:30, unless there's an intervening study session.